I'd like to call for the August 21st, 2022 School Committee meeting. Please rise if we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And a moment of silence. Please be seated. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting will be livestreamed for cable. A recording of this meeting will also be posted on the West Bridgewater Community Access Media website, wb-cam.org. So first up, we have the approval of minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 5th, 2023, and July 24th, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So one point that I wanted to make is I was looking at these today, and I did make a slight change to the July 24th notes. I just added the link to the presentation for Tracy Novick. Other than that, there was no major changes. Any other points to discuss? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, superintendent's update.
All right. First, we'll start with our MSBA meetings. We've had a few over the summer. We've met twice in June and once here early in August, so very productive meetings. All meetings are posted and open to the public for people to come. And Gary Keith as chair has done a really nice job. We have our next meeting on September 12th, and then we are planning for an information night for the community to talk about feasibility. When we look at feasibility, we're going to be attaching a dollar amount to that that will go with us over the time we do the feasibility study. So we've been doing a lot of research, a lot of discussions have been going on at the school building committee meetings. Then looking a little bit further ahead, we're hoping for October 16th to have the special town meeting where they'll do that, they'll have a vote on feasibility, and it'll take a two-thirds vote to pass it. So that's a tentative date, it still needs to be approved by the Board of Selectment. Once we do the feasibility information night, we'll be sharing that information out in a variety of different ways to get it to the public, so they'll know what is expected moving forward. And so we do have a new website. Thank you to Mr. Collins for creating it. We've been adding some content. You'll see what it is here, you can click on "Thank You." There's not a lot of information now. We have the statement of interest posted, we've got to save the date, and a few pictures. So as we go through it, this is one of the places we'll post our presentation, as well as all of the relevant information, meeting minutes, it has the list of school building committee members, some other information. So again, this will be the place that people can go to. It is linked on our school and district websites. We do have a few things that are due next week. We have the maintenance and capital planning. It's an online submission. I've been working with Julie Hamlin, I head a building and grounds, and Kathy Grant to gather the budget information, so we'll have that done presumably this week and submitted. So that will be off the checklist. And then enrollment certification. On August 8th, a subcommittee met with members of the MSBA. We talked about enrollment. We had done an enrollment survey information. They sent it back to us, and then they gave us a projected, a very early projected enrollment, which did show an increase. They actually said that West Bridgewater is a bit unique because the schools are growing here in West Bridgewater, which is not the norm across the state. So we're also concerned about not only the growth, but also the developments in town. So we're looking at current enrollment numbers, we're looking at future enrollment, we're looking at housing developments, we're looking at apartments, and the MBTA housing requirements. Right now, the minimum to comply with the MBTA regulations is 143 additional units. That's still in the very early stages, but there's a lot that's going to happen. It started now, but in the future as well with housing. So we want to make sure when we get these enrollment numbers that they're accurate and they're predictive of what's going to happen in the future. This building here was, the design enrollment was 625. We are over that. It varies year to year, but I think the growth is going to be there. And this growth is independent of our school choice population, so it's really just natural organic growth within West Bridgewater that they're looking at. I think before, we didn't have these housing developments back in 2015 or before when they were starting this. So it was really just based on our current numbers with not a lot of proposed growth at the time. So it's the process going well, and we're moving ahead. And then opening schools, so we're excited. This coming Monday, the 28th, we're going to welcome our staff back, so we're very excited about that. The first day with students, grades one to 12, will be next Tuesday, the 29th. Preschool and kindergarten at Spring Street Schools start on Tuesday, September 5th. Huge thank you to our administrators, our office staff, our custodial and maintenance staff, and all of our educators who have been in and out of the buildings this summer. It's great to see them, it's great to welcome them back. They tend to come in on those rainy days, which is a smart move, and they're setting up their classrooms. We've got a great new group of educators coming in. I've had the opportunity to meet with them, and we have the orientation for new staff tomorrow. So the new teachers and new staff will be in, as well as the mentors to all the new staff. Kyla Daly does an outstanding job running our mentor program. We have sent out some emails. We will be sending out newsletters from the building level and central office. We'll have coffee hours to try to, again, get as much information out there as possible. I've seen and heard from the principals, the touch panels are up in the elementary schools, they look great. We are doing some professional development for staff on that first day, so we'll be giving them training, and I think a lot of it's just going to be using it within the classroom. And in early September, we have our curriculum nights planned. So it's an open house curriculum night where educators and administrators get to meet with the families, talk about what's going on. It's not parent conferences, but it's an opportunity to talk about what they expect to see during the school year. A lot in a very short amount of time is going to be happening. It's exciting. We started athletics. Football started last week, and the rest of it started today. So I'm sure Mrs. Page will say it's great to see all the kids in and around.
Great, and thank you, Mr. Rodwell. It's bittersweet, end of the summer, but it'll be great to have the kids back into their routine.
Yes.
All right, next up is business. The Middle Senior High School Student and Athletic Handbook, Mrs. Page.
So you should have received, I think, the updated newsletter as well. Did you get the cheat sheet too, as well?
Yep.
Okay. There were a few more changes. I have to thank Robyn too, she updated all of our policies for me, and I was like, "Thank you." Because she worked, you and Carrie worked.
I saw that one there.
Yes, thank you. A lot of the things that you will see are editing. It's amazing how many times you can look at a document and say, "How did we miss that last year?" Or the year before. But all the pronouns throughout the handbook were updated either to them there or student where applicable. The policies, like I said, were updated. If you get down to page nine, we added the liability release, which our lawyers had recommended that we do. It's a waiver for MIA participation and for the locker room monitoring. So all students and our parents will be signing that, which is a good thing. Page nine, section five, we added summer school language to regain eligibility, so that if there's a student who maybe failed fourth quarter and for the year, but maybe past scores one, two, three, because you have to have at least a 60 average to go on to summer school, that may make them eligible for the fall. We want to try and, you know, allow students to have the most access to things, keep them structured and staying out of trouble in being part of either a club, activity, and athletic program, so that will allow for that. On page nine, section eight, we added the days to include Saturday and Sunday, and that is for the athletics. On page 10, we added dance. We had an awesome mom last year who came and gave of her time to start a dance program, club, and they loved it. It was great. They put on a small performance for family and friends, and we're hoping that can maybe grow. So we added that to the list. It's unfunded right now, it's strictly volunteer, but she did a great job. Page 10, editing of some sports. Not sure how those were missed, but there were a few sports in there that were missed out of there. 11, 12, again, some revisions, language changes. I'm trying to see, there was liability. There's one in reference to earbuds, which I wanted to make sure that we talked about. Page 18. So we are adding last year with the approval of the school committee to support us, we had the use of phone holders in the classroom, so when students come in, you know, I would say it was probably 95% effective. You know, there's still work to do in terms of kids sneaking a second phone, or what we came to find was that if they have earbuds in, they can still connect to their phone that's on the holder. So that was a good lesson for us. And the purpose of this, again, it's not to be a punishment, but more to keep our students kind of focused and attention to the teacher. So this year, we're asking for school committee to support wireless or wired headphones in the building, just go right into your backpack when you come into school. If they get into the classroom upon the teacher's discretion, if they feel that it's a benefit for the student to have those in the classroom, then that's fine. But so many times, we find, even in the halls, you know, the kids don't hear us because they have the earbuds in. So we just think it'll be beneficial, as well as the smartwatches. Just put them in the bags, they don't need to be out again unless it is for IEP, 504, or at the teacher's discretion in the classrooms.
Were you finding that kids were using the smartwatches?
It's become a thing with teachers, I think, a little bit in testing, and that this is on when their phone's in the pocket. So not a ton, you know, but the staff did bring it to our attention, and, you know, I don't see, I said we're not collecting them, you know, they're not going to go in the pockets because they're small, but they can just tuck them in their backpacks. But they can still, if they're IEP or 504, you know, students that have those as accommodations, and that's, those will be things that teachers will know that they can have them. So. Any other questions on that?
Can I just make a comment, but the smartwatches?
Yeah, sure.
Smartwatches, I don't have one, but kids do. And I know one of my children will get pains to like breathe when they're starting to get a sense of, when the body's starting to feel stressed.
Sure.
That might be something to think about, too.
Well, smartwatches. I know.
It does, it'll tell you stand up.
Have a little bit of anxiety.
No, for sure, yeah.
That was, sorry. And that's why I wish to include it for an IEP, 504 came in. My daughter uses one as well. Hers goes into school time mode during the day though, so it doesn't do anything other than allow her to set timers and monitor the time, but that is something that I brought up as well, that some kids with anxiety do rely on that for meditation purposes and to re-regulate themselves, so it's just something that...
Have I? The smartwatches? I mean, I think there are, you know, a handful. I haven't seen, I mean, there's nobody else here from my school. I don't know, you know, this, you know, I'd say maybe 10% of the population, I could be wrong. So, but I don't ever want it to be a thing that a student would be stressed out about it either. You know what I mean? They were very stressed about the phones in the beginning, and then they kind of got used to it. You know, I think, I think a lot of our goal is to let kids know it's okay to disconnect, and you know what I mean, you'll be okay, but for those types of things, we'll work with students. And this is a recommendation, you know what I mean? And it's always, you know, we want to revisit, we found some things this year with the phones, you know, with kids having two phones, they'll put the fake phone in the pocket. Oh, yeah. You know, I give them credit for some of their ingenuity and, you know, they're, probably something I would do too, back in the day. But, you know, we just, we just want kids to be focused and be able to, I think, and I know I talked about it last year, when, for the update on the phones, one of the big things was the staff were really finding that kids are talking to each other more, that they're really talking to the teachers more, you know, instead of the automatic, we do it as adults, I know I do sometimes, your first thing is to look at your phone, you know? So...
My only thing, you know, the baby might want it more times, but...
Yeah, yeah, it's okay.
And I think it's a great thing now.
Sure.
It's like, it's work per year, is that everybody's in unison, because I did get a lot of feedback from parents in the community where they'd say, "Well, my senior or my junior, the staff said, well, it's the school committee that voted that in, I don't think I've ever mentioned it." And, you know, I just, we work as one, kind of a mentality, you know?
Appreciate the support, but it's coming from us. Like, we're asking.
I hope that everybody is there and...
Yes, yes. Yes, yep, no, that's, and, you know, and we appreciate feedback too, because, you know, we did hear, and those are things that we'll address in the beginning of school, about there were certain teachers that maybe, you know, that were more lax than others. You know what I mean? And, yeah, no one likes to be the bad guy sometimes, but, you know, and I think our staff too is ready for, you know, they see the importance of it, and just all be on the same page.
Yeah.
I think those were like the big ones, the liability, a lot of it was, a lot of it truly was editing, and just for the, with the pronouns and inclusivity pieces to the handbook.
Can you give me a page?
Yep, I sure can, 16.
Yes, thank you. So with the new chapter, 37, 8 and 3/4, they came out last November with, they really want to have us find different ways to discipline and keep in students in the classroom where it's plausible. You know, obviously, safety is of our first concern, but if there are other ways that we can look to, you know, change behaviors, and one of those, we talked about Saturday school. So maybe some of those, you know, we know vaping, you know, you're preaching to the choir here, it's a problem. And we're working, I'm working with Ms. Hamel to try and bring in some education to our kids. They do get the education in the health classes, but I think the more students can understand the dangers of it, because, you know, they think they're invincible and it's not a big deal, but it is. And they're very hard to detect for us. So because of that, you know, sometimes vape, you know, then a kid's sitting in a school suspension, when should they be in class, you know? It may be come on Saturday and hit them where it hurts, you know, and they have to give up some of their own time on the weekend, may deter their behavior more. I don't know, but we just want to look at other ways that we can work with kids on changing their behavior for the better, and maybe not making the same mistakes over and over. So that's, we're not moving to it yet, we just put it in there, because we want to sit down and talk about it, because it will be, you know, it has to be covered for personnel to be there, so we have to sit and think it through, but we want to put it in there so that, you know, in a few months, we're ready to go with it, and we have the people to manage it, and we're able to open the school on a Saturday, we want to be able to move forward with it.
Will you give a heads up to everybody and the communications?
Yes, yes, yep. And I'll talk about it at the curriculum night, and we'll talk about it with the kids when we meet. We meet with all the students the first day of school and go through expectations and things like that.
Okay. We're going to be giving any parent feedback, like, if it's serious.
Yes, yeah. We'll talk about a coffee hour, although our coffee hour, they weren't, COVID killed coffee hour. Not many come anymore, so I don't know. But those are things where we can, any type of conversation about it from what it's coming from, it's not punitive, it's just trying to think of different ways. You know, unfortunately, you know, we talk with our, you know, actions have consequence, and there has to be a consequence if, you know, doing things they shouldn't be doing, school rules, so.
You know, I've always been a believer that the punishment should fit the crime, a natural consequence, and so if Saturday school allows an opportunity, rather than just the straightforward discipline of a detention, it allows an opportunity, like a vocational opportunity, or something to really kind of understand the consequences of whatever their behavior, you know, whatever happened. I think parents are potentially going to lose their mind, but I think that, I think it's important to understand where it's coming from, that it was a change for all districts across the state, that this needs to be, discipline needs to be more focused towards restorative justice, rather than just handing down a punishment.
And again, I want to make sure, if there's anything of, you know, unsafe, you know, safety does not hesitation, you know, to remove a student. These are things that are non-violent, you know what I mean? And just trying to think of different ways that we can work. And the tough part too now, and that's why we need to think about it, is, you know, a lot of kids work on the weekends because they need to help at home and so forth, so it's just something we don't want to just jump into, we want to really kind of think it thoughtfully over.
And I think this may also help to develop or build a relationship with kids, to kind of talk through it in a, in a setting that's, you know, a little bit different than 2 to 2:30 or, you know, 2:45 minutes, where they come in, they do some time, and then they're out the door again. It may give a little bit longer timeframe to build relationships and to talk about it, and hopefully ultimately just change the behaviors.
They had to have Saturday detention in my high school, and it was a pretty strong motivator, Coyle Cassidy.
I don't recall that. I must never have had it. How many times are you there, Dave?
The threat of it kept me in.
We had a few years between us.
Yeah, so it's something, and, you know, we're not talking all day, you know, a couple hours in the morning, but yeah, so.
So you're looking for someone within your team to, if you decide, like volunteer?
Yes, so we're looking to maybe do a stipend. Everything comes with a cost, right? I mean, I'm sure, I think honestly, there'd be enough people to volunteer once we do it. You know, I know Mr. Rodwell had talked about, you know, the admin had said we'd all do, you know, rotate Saturdays through. And I'm not sure you'd want somebody, depending on how many kids, somebody here alone, you know what I mean? So you might want two people, you know? I know...
The wife played the breakfast club.
Yeah, you know? That was a great movie, by the way. So, yeah, so we're still talking it through and trying to figure it out, but we're, you know, I've talked with other social principals, and they have done it in the past, and some said it was very effective. You know, after a few years, it kind of lost its steam a little bit, like everything else sometimes, but, yeah, so I think it may help. I'm sure if there's any students listening right now, they're going to be super thrilled about it.
I'd be very surprised if they don't.
If you're going to have Saturday detention.
Yeah, true, good point. Yeah, so like I said, I think, I just updated the MIA Chemical Health Policy link, and all the other links are in there for the policies.
The athletic, as well.
Yes. There was only a very small change, and sorry that was late. One of them was the editing on page five. I don't have it in front of me, so it's, I'm sure it's something... Oh, that's it, that was it.
And then the registration deadlines.
And then the registration addition for sports registration deadlines, to help Audra, our trainer, and Ms. Hamel in talking today, every year this happens, and so they feel the best way to do it, because you don't want to shut kids out, but they have, they have had ample opportunity to register. You know, Ms. Hamel's done a great job of getting all the information out, but if there is those students who maybe don't get to register on time, they will, the new language will say, I can't see that from here, they'll have, they can go the next day. Can you guys read that? Perfect. And that gives Audra a chance to make sure, because there's, I mean, I don't know if everyone understands the process, you have to make sure all the physicals are up to date, you need to make sure the concussion, you know, protocol has been in process, the, you know, the coaches have the list, so there's a lot that goes into it, it's not just somebody signing up and being ready to go. So this gives Audra and Jen time to make sure they have all the information that they need, so kids stay safe.
Even, I think, right now, we did it up until the day before, I believe, but most schools are doing it, you know, three, four days before. So it's a very normal process, again, for record.
Yeah. And then just the last thing was the senior privileges, and the reason we do this now, it doesn't mean they're going to be gone on the first day, even the first week, but it's just so that when they're in, because, you know, the kids come in and they're doing the right thing, and this is a privilege, so if we can give it to them as soon as possible, then we want to. The only change is, on the first bullet, was from my son, my daughter, son to my child. That was the only change from last year.
Move to accept the 2023 to 2024 Middle Senior High School Student and Athletic Handbook, as well as the Middle Senior High School Senior Privilege Permission Slip, 2023-2024, as written and presented to us. Is there a second? So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, next up, we have the Elementary Student Handbook, Mrs. Goulet and Mr. Lehman.
And thanking Robyn for updating the policies, because I did just click on it, and it looked good to me, so I appreciate the fact that she made sure that the appropriate links were there, and we also did update the pronouns throughout the whole document. So pages three through six is just staffing changes. We had some movement of some staff, as well as some retirements and resignations. We do still have a couple of positions open, so you can see the TBDs listed there. On page seven, we removed the headlights policy, because, thanks to Robyn, it no longer Then page nine, just some language changes with how the policy is labeled. Page 10, I updated the Connect Ed system to Thrill Share, because we don't use Connect Ed anymore. Page 12, we removed the school library section, because unfortunately, the school library is not accessible right now at elementary schools. We also removed technology. We did replace technology this year with the health and wellness, and you can see in the yellow, that is the little blurb explaining the health and wellness position. And technology is not being forgotten, as we know, it's just going to be incorporated into STEM, which is the T in STEM anyway. So Ms. Sullivan has some great activities planned, coding, things like that. So technology will not be forgotten, but I think technology was in place originally when we didn't have devices in our students' hands every single day. We don't need the explicit instruction at this point. On page 15, we removed Apple to smartwatches, because there are a lot, we don't have a huge issue with them, at least at the lower level, it's more kiddos playing games on the many different smartwatches that are available to young children, so we just want to keep those safely away, or hopefully at home. Page 16, we updated the title per SRO from Lockdown Joes, the Emergency Procedures, and the emergency procedures are not listed in the policy, per his recommendation.
And then on page, ours, page 16, we updated, we updated the equal educational opportunities to reference the policy, the current one, JB, so when you read through it, it aligns with that current language. On page 19, we talked about the transition that each, all the schools will be sending home in an electronic newsletter the first Friday of the month, and the superintendent will be sending home a district-wide newsletter the third Friday of the month. And then on page 1920, we have proposed language for report cards, which I know we're going to discuss next.
And then the last one's just a change in label of the policy.
I'm excited to let you know that I have a couple of moments. You probably know what I'm going to say before I'm going to say it. I'm happy to be able to integrate and have a carved out time for social emotional health as well. And I think to your point, technology is, they have devices in their hands. It's in every class now. It's also the T in STEM. So does anyone else have anything else they want to talk about with the handbook?
No.
So there are some openings that still need to be filled?
There are.
We have a couple of tentative last-minute interviews set up and some paperwork that we're hoping to get some people in to sign. At the lower level, especially at Spring Street, we start a little bit later with students actually being in class. So we will definitely pull where we need to. So we always make it work. We make sure all the minutes are met on IEPs. We might just need to be borrowing from other places for a little bit.
Before I make a motion, I'd like to move on to the next piece, the change to trimesters, just because the handbook references it. So before we approve it, let's discuss it.
I'll start anyways because you're going to be able to see it up there. I know at first you see that we're trying to transition to trimesters and you may at first think that means there's going to be less communication, where in fact there will be more communication. In between trimesters, we're going to send home diagnostic reports from our STAR platform as well as some, we're working with the ITLs to figure out which reports from our different platforms will also support a well-rounded picture of what the students are learning and their progress. In addition, we're going to be creating student portfolios that track from beginning to the end of the year. So that will pop up in the PowerPoint, but if not, I'll just share it with everybody later. Also, the why, I'm, to be very transparent, trimesters are healthier, in my professional opinion, and we can disagree, with standards-based grading. We're getting students right away and we're all of a sudden trying to send home a picture of where they are for end-of-year standards in October. So it gathers a lot more questions than really a nice picture. Something else we talked about is educating the parents and the families more so making a stronger emphasis of what it really means to be at this place during curriculum night, but throughout the year. Last year, we did share out some links from, they're called DESI Family Guidelines, that really talk about what your student is supposed to learn by the end of the year. So I think if we continue to focus on making, doing a better job educating everyone and communicating, which is one of our goals this year, communicating more with families about academics, it won't really be a thing. I'm not sure how many other schools, elementary schools, have quarters anymore. I can't find any. So I think it's just sort of like how we adopted standards. It's just time to now adopt trimesters. It's in there, you will say teachers want it, but it's not because there's less, it's just because it's developmentally more appropriate. And it also allows them to develop a better rapport with the students as they're working, providing feedback and really trying to target where they are. So we should be able to do a better job with that.
I think also too, when we're measuring students against year-end standards, you're going to see as parents, a lot less NAs, because I'm sure at the lower level, you're seeing a report card that we're measuring end-of-the-year standards. In the middle of, beginning of November, teachers haven't even touched upon that topic yet. So it's really going to give the parents, we feel, a better picture of how their students are doing against the state standards.
So when you say that there's going to be diagnostic reports that are communicated off, there's going to be any communication, which is great. Will the parents be able to get this report and understand what it means?
Sure. So all of the reports and the platforms we would use have a parent form that comes home with them, a letter explaining things. And of course, the teachers and staff would be willing to and able to explain it even more.
Even with the STAR, there's a QR code specifically for parents, so it goes deeper into the understanding. And then of course, if there's questions, we will make sure we are talking about reaching out so we can explain it further. But they should, they should be pretty user-friendly. But it should be user-friendly because not all of them are. So we will be specific on the ones we send home. So anyone who picks it up, it makes sense to them. Yes, yep.
Any point for me, writing progress notes in my own job, November is too early. It's too early really to, to report on a kid's progress. You've barely met them. So it makes sense to me to move towards trimesters. Any other questions? Okay. Move to accept the 2023-2024 Elementary Student Handbook as written and presented to us. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Move to change Elementary K to five to trimesters moving forward. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One through five? I mean, is it one through five or one through six?
Yeah, one through five.
One through five kindergarten is sticking to the two report cards.
They're tied on that.
Move to change Elementary one through five to trimesters moving forward and remain kindergarten to twice a year?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Inclusion Matters update. I'm going to pass this to Mr. Schmier today.
So the mission of Inclusion Matters as West Bridgewater Special Education Parent Advisory Council is to build inclusive schools and communities. And we do this by supporting families of students with IEPs and 504s and including regular education parents by offering advice, advocacy within the school system and opportunities for education and community building through regular workshops and events for parents, guardians and families. We'll be kicking off our events with an informational table at each school's curriculum night this fall. Please stop by to meet Inclusion Matters board members, ask questions, learn more about us and join our mailing list for a chance to win some awesome giveaways. In the words of Inga Beal, "We all have the ability to promote a culture of acceptance and inclusion." As a parent, you do not need to have a student with a disability to get involved with Inclusion Matters. We're a network of families who understand and care. For more information about Inclusion Matters, you can find us on Facebook at Inclusion Matters MA or by visiting our website at www.inclusionmattersma.com.
Great. Thanks Dave. Okay, moving on to policies to open. So we have a list here. I do want to note before I move to open these, I made the mistake and put JICF on here twice. So it's actually JICA, Student Dress Code, in place of the gang activity secret societies. So I'll share that review so that you have that for the minutes. Okay, move to open the following policies for review. AA, School District Legal Status. AE, Commitment to Accomplishment. AD, Mission Statement Philosophy, Philosophy Statement. ADF, School District Wellness Program. ADDA, Background Checks. ADDA-R, DCJIS Model Query Policy. JIC, Student Discipline. JICA, Student Dress Code. JICE, Student Publications. JICF, Gang Activity Secret Societies. JICFA, Prohibition of Hazing and JICFA-E, Hazing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to approval of policies. Let's see here. So we had a couple of policies open over the summer. Mrs. Milton and I took the time to go through them and consult with administration on some of these. So we have some, some significant changes here. The first motion I want to make, move to adopt AC, ACA, ACE, BEC, JICFB, JIH and JJI. Those are the non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation, non-discrimination on the basis of sex, non-discrimination on the basis of disability, executive sessions, bullying prevention, searches and interrogations and student organizations as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Sure. So, policy AC, non-discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. This is one that we had earmarked for yearly review. We verified that the policy has been put into practice and the current school committee policy was written by outside counsel in 2022 in difference from MASC, so we did not want to change that. ACA, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. The policy again was tagged to having a yearly review. The name had changed from bullying prevention policy in the cross-reference. Again, we verified what was listed in the policy has been put into current business practice and this was another one that was provided to us from outside counsel in 2022 and we just wanted to leave it as is since there was some, some work done. We didn't want to change anything. The next one, just lost my spot, ACE, non-discrimination on the basis of disability. Again, same, same scenarios earmarked as yearly review. The policy has been put into practice and had looked, been looked at by outside counsel in 2022. So the, when I say that, when people go on to MASC and they look, the policy will not be reflective of what's out there. And that's obviously our goal is to, is to try to get as, as close to what they have as possible. BEC, executive sessions, there was very minor changes. JICFB, bullying prevention. We are recommended that the current policy is rescinded. The existing policy consisted of the bullying prevention plan. We took the MASC policy and inserted it into our West Bridgewater policy. We recommend that the policy documentation in the West Bridgewater policy be repurposed as a standalone document for the bullying protection plan, which was upstate, recently updated on the website. And then we had a question for the administration, which was, "Per MASC policy updated in 2021, each school shall document any incident of bullying that is reported per this policy and a file shall be maintained by the principal or designee. A monthly report shall be provided to the superintendent." So when we were meeting, we were talking about that verbiage that was in the policy. We were wondering, is that, like, do we have those metrics and what do they, if we do, like, do they reflect?
They're all reported, recorded in Aspen, so we can gather information as needed and then it's information is shared with me.
All right. JIH, searches and interrogations, no edits, just added some minor sourcing. There was one thing that we did talk about with that one though, and it was more of like a philosophical question was, do we need to or how are we capturing consent from students for those searches and interrogations? Do we have to do, do we have to have any sort of consent that we know of? Yeah. So they don't have to have, okay. All right. And then JJI, student organizations. Added section, student organizations in high schools, that was not included in the policy that we had. And that was it for those.
Okay. I just want to circle back to the non-discrimination policies, AC, ACA and ACE. Part of the reason these are reviewed annually is just to make sure that everything is up to date in the buildings, on the website. So Mr. Robert, please...
So we are posting links in the teacher's room or staff rooms and we're also looking to produce, I don't think they're hanging yet, but QR codes that go to the policy. So in an easily accessible spot within the school. So visitors or students, if they have any questions or concerns related to discrimination, harassment or sexual harassment, they can access those policies very easily.
Good, thank you. And then in terms of the bullying plan, do you want to speak to some of the cases?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so we added in some more specific information to the plan in terms of reporting or gathering information, where to send it before. It was more generalized. There'll be an email provided and so on. So we literally put down a district level and then each building level, a contact person, an email, a phone number and a mailing address if they want to send something in. We also reinstituted our student safety tip line, which I think is good. We've had that. It was, I think with Google, they lost the number or wasn't used enough. So Mr. Collins worked with the administrative team, so we have that running. It will be reintroduced to the kids on opening day. It's another way to report information. That information is in the bullying prevention intervention plan, but it's also, I think, a good practice to have if something's going on, whether it's bullying or potentially a student in danger or possibly harming themselves, it's a way for them to report information. It's stated very clearly, it doesn't replace 911 or face-to-face interactions. It's not monitored every minute of the day. What happens is they send a text and an email will come to the building principal, myself and the SRO. So it's a way to gather more information. Also with the bullying prevention plan, right now, we have, still have a link for the documentation. We're working on getting that to be a Google Doc. So not only can administrators use it, but if a parent or a community member or a student wants to fill it out, there's a section that they can do and then the form is submitted and a report is generated. And it's a great way to keep all these in one place too. So it's not just paper being passed around, it's going to go and be documented.
Is the tip line anonymous?
It's anonymous, but we've had...
I can see someone asking.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's, and it's stated in there. It's anonymous, but it's not private in that if, for example, if someone says, sends something in and says so-and-so, I know it's a student and they may hurt themselves. Well, we're going to follow up if we don't know who that student might be. And then that happened in the past. We've had to investigate.
Yep.
We want them to know, but again, it's, it's, you know, it could be just concerning to see something and you don't know the information, so you want to try to gather as much information. It's also so that we try to really prevent false reporting. We don't want people to send stuff that is knowingly false. But if they have a concern, we want to put it out there. And most of the time, you know, probably 95%, 99% of the time, we do not follow up with the student. If there's a question, we may go and they'll, they'll do their investigation, but we're not going to go back with that number.
Yeah. I was just thinking sometimes there's that fear that kids don't want to be retaliated against or, which is, you go through it now, right? Reported this on their phone.
Right.
Okay, so we are at, we've moved, we've seconded. All in favor? Just to refresh, the motion was to accept all of these policies as written.
Yeah, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next one, move to rescind JICFB form, bullying incident reporting form, JICFB form, parent communication form as school committee policies and refer these documents to administration for review and inclusion with the district bullying prevention and intervention plan. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then the last one, move to adopt policy JJI, student fundraising activities as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yeah, sure. So this is one we've had open since, I don't know, March or April. We'd wanted some time once we reviewed the policy that MASC had, kind of made us take a step back a few times. And we wanted to, over the summer, reach out to the PTO to get some of their feedback because they're the ones that run a lot of these events for the kids. And we didn't really, we didn't want to make any decisions in a vacuum and not obtain feedback from those that are actually doing a lot of the work, the legwork for us. We did reach out to them and I think they, and sent them the policies. They'd met as, there was a smaller subgroup within the PTO that, that got together. And they came back and said that really that they would feel more comfortable if the administration made those decisions and gave feedback. So I guess long the shortest, there is no feedback. But with that, what Robin and I have done is we've gone through it and we're recommending that we take the policy as written. that we take the policy as written by MASC. One of the, the main concerns that we had was that, you could see it highlighted in the, in the agenda that we have, in green, was the verbiage regarding, let me just pull it up for a second, fundraising activities. And it says, fundraising activities may not involve competitions amongst students. Students may not be rewarded with additional recess, snacks, activities, or any other type of prize for having raised larger amounts of funds or reaching fundraising goals. And that's what we had, you know, gave us the pause, was that we know that we have some, the fun run, the fun run's an excellent example. And, you know, they, they, it is a competition amongst the students. So if we go in and we adopt this policy as written, because that's what we like to do, right? We're trying to be consistent, what's that going to do downstream? But we do think that there's a ways that we can work around that. Certainly, we don't want to put a stop to the fun run. We love the fun run. And I think the fun runs made great progress over the past few years, especially the way it's been run and managed. But we, we do want to take the policy the way that we, that we've, have, have seen it from MASC and adopted.
I think the fun run specifically brings in a lot of funds for the PTO, which in turn then...
Incredible, no?
...saves a lot of programs for the students. So this is why we, we've kind of held this off for several months. But the MASC policy has really good points about exploitation of students. And I know for, for our family, there's a lot of pressure to sign up, you know, reach out to all of the family members, and, and we got to get that prize, and we got to do this. And I know that a lot of changes have happened over the last couple of years, that it's not impacting instruction time, it's not impacting classroom time, that the competitions are more classroom-based. So no student is, is maybe of lower socioeconomic status disadvantaged. And so those are the things that we really were, were being mindful of here in considering this policy.
And the kids love it. And as much as I hated it when I had my last one, I was like, oh my God, this is my last fun run. You know? So anyways.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? No? Okay.
Happy to put this one to bed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, moving on to the warrants. The following warrants were issued and paid for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Bill warrants, June 1st, 2023, for $150,197.94. June 8th, 2023, for $92,018.22. June 15th, 2023, for $44,232.73. June 22nd, 2023, for $49,309.89. July 6th, 2023, for $102,892.56. July 27th, 2023, for $135,726.89. The following payroll warrants, June 9th, 2023, $625,801.65. June 23rd, 2023, $516,252.1. July 7th, 2023, $497,163.65. And July 21st, 2023, for $479,949.88. As always, all warrants are public record, and once signed, are available in the selectmen's office for review. Okay, moving on to public comment. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student or employee confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public comment. Any takers? All right, seeing none, we will move on. So we have some, some upcoming, a lot of upcoming events. Of note, the first day of school for grades one through 12 is August 29th. The first day of school for pre-K and kindergarten is September 5th, and we, as we discussed, welcome the teachers back on August 28th. For all upcoming events, you can find these events on the website, on the district website, on the district and school newsletters, and the WB app, which I just discovered, actually exists.
Did you say WB app?
The WB app, yes.
Oh, I just discovered it.
Has everything on there, so. So our next regular school committee meeting date is September 11th, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the middle, senior, high school learning commons. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, have a good night, everyone.